Ready again. And our roll call today has all of the board members except for Joe Catron who may be joining us. Online here a little bit on a zoom link. Our public comments, is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Doesn't look like it. Is empty today. We do have one administrative item to. To approve, I believe that the PLU honor band. In Tacoma, excuse me, the honor band is going to PLU in Tacoma. And has an overnight request form that's been filled in. I'll make a motion that we approve the. Overnight travel request. Is there a second? And is there any comments or questions about the overnight travel request? Okay, looks great. I'm looking to see the number of students that are involved. Not just jumping right out at me here, but it's going to be on. Eight, thank you very much. It's going to be. Starting today. It's good that we're approving it right now. All right, all those in favor of approving the overnight travel request signify with an eye. Eye opposed abstentions? All right, we are now in the study session portion of our agenda today and we have. Two agenda items. Do we want to go in the order that they're presented? We don't have to get Joe out of here to get on a bus, right? We're okay this morning. So we'll start with Jeff Cochrane, who's going to explain a little bit about the Viking to Wildcat. Pipeline, I guess maybe it'd be a way to describe it. Thank you for being here this morning.
What I'd like to start with is a little bit of some data on dual credit, where we're at with that. Where we are as a district in terms of. Course selection, courses we have, credits we offer, and then get into the Viking to Wildcat program that we've started this year. So. The first thing on the first slide here, I'd like to look at some of our data compared to a. A district who is very similar to us. So if we can go to the next slide, Jennifer. So wanted to look at where we are in terms of what percent of students enroll first year after high school graduation, what percent of enrollees persist after the first year of post-secondary? The highest degrees attained within eight years. So that goes back, you'll notice on that one, the data. Is 2015 because that's the eight-year window there. I know it's kind of small there, but I'll read you some highlights of these numbers. So statewide, we're above average in persistence. So that's students who stick with school. And that's something that is really, really important to us. We're really wanting our students to go where they're going to go and stick with it. To us, that means that they're. They're really. We're preparing them and helping them find where they want to go and that they know that that's the right choice for them. We're also above average, thirty-five percent to thirty-three percent. Above average of the state. Who's getting their bachelor's degrees of thirty-five percent. And you can see our, our closest. Demographic. District East Valley there, you can see their numbers as well as to see how we compare. So you can see twenty-six percent is the highest degree in eight years for them and it's thirty-five for us. The, the students enrolling in a four-year school directly out of, of high school, that's sixteen percent for East Valley and it's twenty-four percent for us.
And Jeff, can I ask quickly, where does this data come from? Who's, who's collecting this?
It's the ERDC, it's Educational Research Data Consortium. Yeah, I mean, you can look at these, it's their public numbers.
And it's from twenty or two thousand seven or six to twenty fifteen, is that right?
Yes, well, the, so on that one, yes, but on the top two. It goes from two thousand five to two thousand twenty-one.
Oh, I see.
So that's the, the most recent number there. We're expecting to have some data from twenty twenty-two here pretty soon.
That's great. I mean, I, if I think about this and I think about test data. Which is maybe a point in time, this is more of an overtime kind of look at it.
Absolutely.
That's terrific. Thank you.
So if we go to the next slide, just some, the narrative kind of piece of, of this here. Sorry, Jennifer, thank you. So you can see those are the number that I just spoke about statewide, we're above persistence eighty-eight to eighty-seven, even though we're a higher needs district compared to statewide. We, we certainly have. Different needs. That's why I put East Valley up there so we could see a district that's very similar to us. We're above average in bachelor's degree and then associate certification as well. And we're below average in getting no degree. So students are getting a degree or certification. So below average there is good. So, and as I said, this is, this is indicating that we're doing a better than average job, right? We're better than average, helping students identify what they want in the future since they're sticking with it. And then when you compare it to districts who have similar demographics, the difference is even more stark. You know, we're ten percent or more above. Districts who are, who have similar demographics. You have any questions on, on that before I kind of move forward into some of the things that we've been doing? Okay. So, so this one's just, I mentioned in that last slide, the trend that, that we're having, you can see two thousand five there, we were twenty-six percent. Earning that post-secondary credential and we were below average at that point and we've been trending up. In the last, you know, few years. Okay, so wanted to quickly talk about what's dual credit. Some of you have seen this before, but dual credit is. College and the high school or CTE dual credit. It's, it's really when, when I talk about dual credit, I'm talking about credits students earn while on Seela High School's campus. So I'm not really talking about running start. Running starts a great option for many students, but I think we actually have a better package that we offer. On our campus now, and that's what I'm going to kind of get into with the Viking to Wildcat program. So our partnerships, we are up to a hundred and eighteen credits on our campus from Central, fifty-six from YVC, forty-three from Eastern and five from UW. UW was previously fifteen, but we decided to go with Central for English one-on-one, English one-on-two and English one-on-five. That's a shift in, in how we've. How we've looked at things and part, and part of that is because we want to get as many. Central credits as we can. Twenty-two percent of our students who go to, who leave us go to Central, that's the highest. That's the highest institution. And that number is also from ERDC. So a number, number of college credits per year, you can see. When I came on in, in twenty twenty, that's the first number I, I have. So you can see that there and see how we've gone up. I was going to bring up the actual. Numbers for you. So we went from. One oh six, my first year and now as of next year, we'll have two hundred and twenty-two credits available. Okay. This year we have two hundred and fourteen credits available and last year we had four thousand one hundred credits earned on our campus by our students. Those are not running start numbers. Those are college and the high school and CTE dual credit numbers that kids are getting in our classes during our school day. The next two slides or next three slides are just the actual classes that we offer. So you'll be able to see. The central credits. There's the central ones. The Eastern UW, we'll send you this, you can take a look at it. And then the YVC ones, YVC credits are the typically the CTE dual credits. It's an articulation agreement we have with YVC. So that's where the. Primarily our, our CTE dual credits come from, although we do have a. I think twenty-four CTE credits from Central as well. So the next slide, if, if you want more info, this is really, it's a slide I use with parents if they want more info. I have a, I have a transfer guide. You guys have seen that before. I've shown you that before, but it, it's always updated. On the left, you'll see the, the courses that we have and then what they transfer to in every institution. Every public one in the state and then BYU as well. So the other thing we've been working on is a statewide program comparison. So one thing that, that I'm really passionate about is knowing where we stand. And then seeing who's doing things really, really well and kind of what can we learn from them? How can we use that to get even better? Turns out that we're the best. So. So what I liked, I'm, I'm totally self-serving. I'm looking at CTE and I'm looking at dual credit, the two programs I'm in charge of. Or two of the programs I'm in charge of are CTE percent. If you. Normalize the percent of students participating in CTE to the number of students you have in your district, we're number five overall in the state. The total number of CW credits, we're number eight overall. Everybody above us is much larger. The next closest district in size to us is West Valley. They're number seven. Everybody else is double or larger. And, and that's a total number of credits, so. That goes into this Viking to Wildcat project that we're working on. Central's very willing to work with us because we're the, the person or the, the institution who is. Offering the most amount of credits and earning the most amount of credits in their region. And then also total number of college credits, we actually go up one. We're number seven overall and West Valley drops out of that one because we get so many YVC credits as well and they, they do not. And we also do UW credits and they do not. And then our newest CTE program, the middle school, we, it's only been going for three years and we're already number eight overall in the state. Um, in terms of size, when you compare to the percent. So what I did is I created a composite rank, CTE plus college credit. Basically, what do we rank in CTE? What do we rank in number of college credit and then give us a total? We're number one. So, and, and it's not particularly close. So part of this work is a Gates grant that, that we're working on in terms of getting this data. And I put this together for the Gates grant to try to learn from other districts and it turns out they need to learn from us. Because we're doing a lot of really, really great things. And, you know, we have great staff and great partnerships with our, with our post-secondary institutions that help us get. Where we are now.
Jeff, you mentioned that, first of all, this, these are great numbers, obviously. You mentioned. The amount that's available. How are, how are parents, and you also mentioned that you present this to parents. What does that look like? How, how are parents being kind of informed about their options?
Yeah, so we, we do a dual credit night where it's specific to dual credit night, only dual credit, and then we also have a futures night where we present this again.
And those are for high school parents?
High school parents. I see where you're going with this also. We need to be better at getting to middle school parents. Especially with our Viking to Wildcat program, which we can go to the next slide. Because Viking to Wildcat starts as a ninth grader. You are able to get college credits, college and the high school now as a ninth grader. And this program that we're rolling out really starts. With getting simple, easy. Not, well, not easy because they're college, college classes, but those, those ninth grade classes kind of out of the way so that you can take. As usually as a juniors when you really have to take a lot of college and the high school classes if you want to do this program.
And how is the participation at the dual credit night or at Futures Night? You get a lot of parents there?
We do, we do. And last year it was a lot of parents wanted to know about how to get the, the AA was how we were rolling out that last year. The AA is much more difficult than this. So, but a lot, most of the parents had heard about that, wanted to come learn how to do that. And so it ended up being. Kind of a presentation and then almost a workshop where counselors are working with parents and saying, hey, you need to take these types of classes. In order to make, make this happen.
Great, thank you.
So our newest program, we now offer. I should say now, as of next year, we will offer all of the classes students need to meet the general education requirements at Central. While on our campus. So typically, general education, that's your first two years of a four-year school. You're able to meet all of those from us. While on our campus. So. How we did this is we worked with, we worked with the college and the high school department on Central's campus. I have a really close relationship with them as well as the president's office at Central. And. We basically said, hey, we offer all of these classes. We, we found that we only needed two or three different, two or three additional classes. And we already had the teachers who were approved to teach those. So we had Alex Soto was one of them. We needed. Physics one-on-one, which is an astronomy class. And we needed English one-on-two, which we didn't currently teach. We also, we had two teachers who were qualified to teach that already approved by Central. So then it was working with those teachers and saying, hey, would these be things you're willing to teach? Would you have the skill set to do so? And would you be able to meet with Central and determine if this is a good fit? So we did those things. And now we, we meet all of the, the general education requirements. We have a class in every single section. And we've simplified things and I apologize, our printer was out of paper this morning. And I gave all, you have them. I gave them, I gave them all to Chris yesterday because she was presenting this to the chamber, Chris? Yeah. So. One of the things that, that students often struggle with as a freshman going to Central, going to Eastern, going to WSU, any, any school really is. The complexity of figuring out what are the general education requirements? What classes do I need to take and how do they plug in? The added layer to that with our students is they would go from college and the high school, they would have credits from four different institutions, as you saw. And they would have to figure out how they transfer and what they transfer in as. Well, that transfer guide I've created helps that. This helps it even more by saying this class counts in that category that we offer. This class counts in that category that we offer. And all down the line. So we've. Simplified it and taken. Basically said, and you'll see it here when Chris brings it. There's like six classes that count in quantitative reasoning. They can pick any of those six and that counts in their category, any of those six in college and the high school. So. Just really quickly, we can go to the next slide. I'll, I'll do some highlights of this before we kind of get into it. I want you to look at the actual document. So we're the only state. That's able to do this currently. Oh, excuse me, the only district in the state that's able to offer this. So the, the really. The really cool thing I think for us is that. CW is using our materials, this, this piece that you have in front of you. CW is using this material that I created. To promote college and the high school to other districts. They're using us as their example of, hey, this is what districts could be doing in order to move things forward for students so they, they can start much, much earlier. And, and get into, get into college. It'll save a student. Fifty-two thousand dollars by doing this process. By taking these classes with us. Which is just massive. The question that I think will probably come up is how many students are already. Almost ready to do this. I did two. For a different purpose, but I was looking at two students. Credit transcripts, there were two juniors, college and that's students who have taken a lot of college and the high school. This particular junior is two classes away. Excuse me, three classes away from completing their general education requirements as a junior. And this is kind of a, this is, this is a typical. Student who takes college and the high school. These are classes that many students who are college and the high school students who take college and the high school, they already take. So I'd like, I'd like for us to kind of look at this document here. The front is sort of just the publicity things. That's the, the numbers. But the back is really what we're, what we're looking at. That's the, where it says pathways and knowledge areas. It's a table. And then courses offered at Seela High School. Oh. Sorry. Yeah. Some of them were one-sided, sorry. They, they need it over here. We might like this, you will like this. How do the teachers get certified to, to teach these classes? So it's a application process. So they essentially have to apply to be professors at that university. So resume, multiple letters of recommendation, there's an audit basically on their resume from the department. So at Central, Central's like, let's say I want to apply to, to be in math. The math department requires you to have a master's in math. So you have to have a master's degree in math and then they make sure that you've taught that particular subject for a particular number of years. Central's are. They're, they're department by department. So that's where I come in and try to talk to those departments and try to talk to the, the college and the high school. Lead, I guess he's, he's their director. To try to kind of. Grease the wheels a little bit and make sure that, hey, this person does know their content. The, the example I can have of that is ASL. So our ASL class is now a Central class. He didn't have the one class that Central required you to have to teach that as a college and the high school class. So what we said is, hey, can we sign on with you? And he, he will take that class. We'll pay for it within the next three years. And, and they said, yes, that would be acceptable to us. You'll take that class. We'll put you in. And if we don't get it done in three years, then, then his ability to teach that class goes away. Most universities are like that. We have three pending applications to teach some UW college and the high school. So. Our computer science class, we're applying to have that be. There's two computer science classes that we're applying for and chemistry one-on-one. So we're applying for those classes from UW currently. The difference between UW and Central is UW, they take, number one, they take longer. Number two, they, they will offer it to you and say, hey, you are now a college and a high school professor with us. In a year. So we have to take a year gap. So even if we get approved this school year, we would not be approved for next year. We'd be approved for the, the, what's that, twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. And then the other piece to that Derek is, is. They, they come and audit. So the, the central professors in that department come and they sit in that class and they observe and, and you have to submit portfolios of student work showing that you've actually. Done what you said you were going to do. So the second page here, just call your attention to, these are the, the classes that we offer are in the courses offered to Seela High School column. Students have to take one class in each row. So you can see one of the issues that we've identified already with counselors is that there are some rows where we only offer one class. So that makes that class very, very important. And what we're going to do from the, from the counseling side is identify students who this is of interest. And ensure that we have spots available in those classes for them to take every school year. One of those classes is our, our public speaking class, our Eastern CMST two-on-one public speaking. That's a key class that is not well-attended. So we don't have a lot of students who sign up for that. So we really need to lean into. Getting students into that class. Because if students want to do this, want to do Viking to Wildcat, take care of all of those classes, that's an essential class. And you can see there's, there's other areas like that as well. The, the piece that I'm doing and the, the UW college and the high school is a part of that is. Trying to find what other college and the high school classes we can offer so we can have multiple in each category. For example, the physical and natural world, world part there. Right now, it, introduction to astronomy is our only option. Chemistry would fit into that category. So that's what we're trying to do with that class. And then the other piece too is with Central, you can always get, or you, you always need additional electives. So you can see in that bottom kind of gray. Row there, all of the other options we offer that transfer in direct as central credits. The biggest difference between this and our AA degree is the AA degree, you have to take. Very specific classes and there are classes that often don't fit really well together. This offers a lot of classes that students typically take. Students who are college-bound often take our college and the high school English classes and our college and the high school math classes, right? And those are. Those take care of multiple things within, within this chart. And our history classes as well. Good question. So in, in some areas we do that. So we take two trimesters and they get. English one-on-one. We do that with English one-on-one, English one-on-two, our math one-fifty-three, one-fifty-four, it's actually a three trimester class. But you get ten credits, right? And so what we do is we try to have that first trimester. If we do that, we try to have that be like an intro class. And then that, the, the course they earn the credit in is the second trimester of that, of that course, the B is what we call it. Other questions you have?
Jeff, my daughter Ashlyn used this. Money-wise, it saved her probably forty, fifty grand, as I said. And just for other students, I see when they started accomplishing a little bit of college and high school, a college less intimidating, holistically. Gives them that kind of confidence to do that. You know, plus the theory kind of, they've already started. They've got, you know, whether it's fifteen credits or forty-five or, you know, sixty credits already done, let's finish this thing. So all that's kind of been towards the positive. I assume there's also a little bit of, of correlation between students doing college in the classroom and attendance levels, you know. Participation, having the ability to still be in high school has been great. The only thing that. I think would be something to, at parent night, that's what we did. Ashlyn was going to do a, a running start and then go and say, hey, come to this parent night, you know, let's talk about college in the classroom and that's a great decision, all that kind of stuff. The only thing, you know, when talking with parents is now you've got a nineteen-year-old with a college degree, you know, and sometimes that's a little bit, you know, shocking to a parent as well.
Yeah.
So kind of having those discussions ahead of time. If your kid does this, I mean, they're, they're, they're headed track, you know, and. Now they need to decide, you know, at age nineteen, they're done, let's get the workforce or whatever.
Yeah.
It gives other opportunities as well. And that'd be the only thing that was kind of a little bit shocking, you know, when. Going to high school graduation at age, you know, eighteen, college graduation at age nineteen, that's a little bit of a change, but overall it's been fantastic for every student that I've heard has gone through it. So thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Jeff, what's, what are the running start numbers look like as this sort of rolls out?
Yeah, so we have trended down in running start numbers. I don't have the exact percent in front of me, but we have about sixty students who participate in running start. I believe it's about ten to twelve who are full-time running start and then others are partials. So they might do one class. Here or there. The, the thing that, that running start offers that we just can't is. You're off-campus, right? I mean, and, and for some students, that is what you want, right? High school life isn't for me. I don't want to do the pep assemblies. I don't want to be in a class with, you know, juniors, seniors, someone who isn't maybe as serious. The other thing running start offers is you can. It, it's quarter-based. So those classes that are two trimesters. They're not, you know, at YVC, they're, they're a single quarter and you can complete that class really, really quickly. We don't currently offer that, nor do we want to. We want to offer an alternate to, to running start that, that fits students who want to stay on campus, who want to be. There with us. So, you know, sixty students and then we have about, you know, ten to twelve who are full-time. But those numbers have gone down because we are offering more credits and. You know, these credits tend to transfer a little bit better in some cases. If, if only because these are kind of the core classes in, in multiple. You know, everybody kind of has their general education requirements from a four-year institute. You you know, everybody kind of has their general education requirements from a four year institution. Um that's the other thing I've started working on is Viking to Eagle, you know, Viking to Cougar, right, so all of these other institutions, what does that look like? How many of those classes do we have? We're two away at at WSU, we're one away at Eastern. And those are classes we actually won't be able to ever offer in college and the high school because they're three hundred level, but. It we're we're trying to figure out and and help communicate so that parents and students are making. When they make that decision about running start and if to go, they're they're making a a decision that works for them.
And is there no longer a cost difference between, say, college and the high school and running start, is that correct?
Actually, running start will cost you some money. Um you're, number one, you're limited on credits, you you're able to earn at the free rate for credits. Um and also you might have some uh material costs, some book costs and things like that. Um with college and the high school is completely free.
No fees associated with any of it like you might at running start for a lab, for instance.
Correct.
Can I ask our our uh student board representative something that Jamie brought up? Which is, I'm uh have you all started earning college credit? Let me ask that question first.
Just speaking from someone who like participates in the college and the high school classes, I really appreciate the program just because. High school educate, like the the environment is for me, I do like it there. So when I was kind of running out of like gen ed classes to take sophomore year, I thought that my only option would be running start, but then I discovered this. Awesome thing and um it's just kind of opened my. Opportunities to be able to stay, and I I do have to be at the high school for like sports and stuff too and clubs, so. It is nice to just be able to stay there, but also have the same opportunities.
And Eddie, are you going back and forth between the high school and the community college, or are you mainly doing running start?
I've, the only class I've taken at the high school is grad launch that I've been writing.
And I, if you don't mind me asking, what made you make that decision rather than doing the college and the high school?
I wanted to get some college credits done and I didn't know as much about college and the high school as I do now, I might have looked at that more if I had known that was more of an opportunity. But I more wanted to get in an environment where people were more serious, not that people at the high school aren't serious, but there are, there is just that little bit of.
It can sometimes be different when you're sitting next to a twenty year old or a thirty year old than uh somebody else, you know.
Choosing my schedule.
Right, yeah, some flexibility.
Seven to two, seven thirty to two every day, just that little bit of extra freedom.
Right. Uh Jeff, that reminds me, in terms of schedule, if a student is taking all college classes at the high school. Do they have to be there the whole day, uh or do they have to still fill out the rest of their schedule?
Yes, yep. Yeah, so we we typically don't do any open periods, anything like that. Um we try to get students in as many classes as we can. Um the other piece to that, um actually where I thought your question was going is how difficult is it to schedule all of this and to make sure. Students are able to take all of them, and the truth is, it's really difficult. Um but what Colton and I do is we we prioritize these classes and make sure that they are not competing against each other, for example, calculus is one of the first classes we place to make sure. You know, students are able to take that, and then we go, okay, English one oh five, which is the class typically with with seniors, right, we we put those. In different time slots, so students can take both.
I I just see the work of so much counseling uh in this that it's it's really impressive. And uh Claire and Charlie, how about you, and and I guess one of my questions is. Uh if you're if you're going to have a bunch of credits when you graduate from high school, do you worry about missing out on the college experience? Uh by just having maybe a a two years of college afterwards, or do you think maybe I'll double major, how do you guys kind of factor that in?
Um so I've like, I've always known like what I wanted to do like after high school, so it's never been like a tough decision for me. But um I was kind of looking at like YVC, um because I really wanted to get sort of that college, like the credits done, but um. This was such just a better like opportunity for me because I got to stay in the high school. And um this year so far, seven out of ten of my classes have been college in the high school, so I've been earning like. An incredible amount of credits while also being able to stay. In the high school, participate like a normal high school student, so um and I think most of the students who are in the honors program are looking to. Earn those college credits, really already kind of have a sort of idea of um what they want to do, especially um. A lot of the credits are maybe geared sort towards some CTE pathway, so um for instance, education, we have a really great um. Pathway if you want to become an educator or like daycare provider after school, so I think um. In that instance, many students are already knowing what field they want to go into or already have some sort of um post secondary plan.
Um I've already taken quite a few college and the high school classes. And the only reason I didn't really look at YVC was because I don't really want to make that drive and I don't want to pay for gas. So those are the two reasons I didn't take that, I won't. Um but I'm not really worried about missing out on the college experience because I've also had my career figured out for a really long time of like what I want to do, what I want to do in the future. And I don't really want to go to a college because I don't. Thank you, too many people, but yeah, like I'm not worried about anything and I've. Taken quite a few classes that have gotten my college credits up, so.
And and Lauren and uh Eddie, do you think about, oh, I want to maybe save some of this for college or that maybe I'll I'll add something to college?
Honestly, I think that in the long run, it saves me money, so that's the. Majority of my concern because I'm attending college out of state, so that's going to be pretty expensive with even with scholarships, so. Right now, what I'm trying to do is get as much of it out of the way as possible, rather than saving some of it for college. Um because even with like as many college credits as we've all taken, we'll still have a lot of opportunity in college. To take more classes, and if you're seeking a higher degree than a bachelor's degree, then you have even more opportunity.
That's that was one of my questions, is does this start making you think about advanced degrees? Post bachelor?
Does, uh I don't think I would have considered it had I not had the opportunity to get some of my gen eds out of the way. But just just because this opportunity here, I've kind of, it's kind of intimidating, but I've started to plan for. After bachelor's degree.
Right, right.
Yeah, I thought about it similarly from a money standpoint of it's saving a lot of money to get college credits done before I leave for college. And I'm going out of state too, and then I want to attend medical school after I get my bachelor's, so that's just. More school, so I'm not really worried about. Missing out on the experience of getting more of an education after high school, because I'll have plenty of years to do that. But I've thought about how it saves a lot of money in in that way.
Great, thank you very much.
I think to add to add on, I think one thing to highlight too is the the foundation of building our CTE programs and the pathways. Typically, what has happened historically with students as they enter college. They go because they know they want to go to college, but they don't know what they want to do. And so our students, one, are attending at a higher rate, they're persisting at a higher rate because they've already. Uh they already know what 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 their their career path is and what they're passionate about, I think that's been a lot of, that's been a lot of the work that Jeff and and the high school staff has done to build that, so. Really proud of of that work that they've done.
It also allows you to. Change your mind in college a little bit, and so my older son, when college was possible, just kind of formulae, I think he ended up with forty five or fifty credits from the high school. That's not for me, which he still graduated in four years, so.
Couple other things that I think are important to keep in mind, first of all, Colton would have been here, he had plans to be here, but he's recovering from a major knee surgery that he had. He's, I think he's realized he's getting a little older and can't do the things he used to be able to do, but that's regardless, he would have been here on that. There are a couple of things from a superintendent perspective that I, when I look at college in the high school. And dual credit in general is the the importance of two things, one, student interest in in that. Students have to be interested in it. Students have to see the opportunities that are ahead of them. Because they're the ones selecting what courses they're going to take. If we offer these and they choose not to take them, that that's not doing the just the school any good, and it's not doing the students any good, so. Student interest uh drives a lot of this, and we're very fortunate that we have a a student body. In our high school currently, but students in general in our district that have an interest in pursuing. Uh further educational opportunities and participating in career pathways, so student interest is is important for sure. The second one is, I think you know, is that the the staffing. The staffing in order to offer these opportunities to students is is eh they're they're a they're a different type of staff member, they are um. Many times multiple degrees, uh degrees in specific content areas, uh nationally board certified. Um so these are, these are staff members who are fully committed to being uh instruct instructors, not just within a high school, but in a. Very, very professional manner, so they they have a a buy in as well. And we could not offer those opportunities to our students if we didn't have that caliber of staff member who has those. Those uh backgrounds and training to be able to to, you know, it's just not like we can't hire those, so these are very important people within our. Entire organization in order to offer these opportunities to students. It it's really staff dependent in a lot of cases because we. Although when we we recruit and hire, we look for these these people who have these degrees and have these experiences. But that's not any guarantee, because there is other school districts that want to keep those people as part of their organizations to provide their students, so. Um we, the staff members that we do have in these positions, uh I know Jeff uh. And Colton really take care of them in a way and encourage them to continue. Uh if they have a skill set that we take advantage of, then we push them in directions uh so that we can continue to offer these to our students, but. It is dependent, um it's I I it's not really budgetary dependent. Uh when we run, when we run our trimester schedule, uh. Way of doing things at the high school, that's a little bit more expensive because it takes more staff in order to have have a lot of those courses, but. But again, uh it's not a budget issue per se, we wouldn't have to reduce because of budgeting, it's really student interest and staff. That that make these programs go.
There are fear factor then, that like.
Yes.
Part with us and then how we are. Selling this is, are we like two teachers away from this kind of being a house of cards and how we can't offer it?
So typically, uh for for like some of these essential classes, we have multiple people who can teach it. Um so that's the other piece to this is not just, do we have multiple courses in each. Category, but do we have multiple people who can teach it? There's a few classes where it's like, hey, this is the only teacher who can. Um and those are key classes, so it's it's something we talk about, right? Um you know, if if a teacher who's. Comes to us and says, hey, I'm getting burned out, I need a day of planning, you know, because I teach all college and the high school classes. We're going to give them that, I mean, that's part of the, you know, we're trying to help them along as well, because it is more rigorous, it is more work on the teacher. Um they get a, they typically get a small stipend from a from the university, um it's like four hundred dollars. Um but and and they get some some training as well in the summer, and that's a paid training from that from that university. Um but yeah, I think that, you know, like Kevin mentioned, it there's always that kind of that fear factor of, okay. You know, we want you to do this, but what I've tried to do with these newer courses is identify two people and get them both certified at the same time. Um so that way we have, you know, sort of a backup.
Let me ask the student board reps one more question, are there any college and the high school classes you've taken at Seela that you want other students to know about? Do you have a great instructor experience or great content experience, you go, man, everybody should take this class? You want to hype one up?
I would like to recognize pre calc and calculus, Mrs. Roberts does a fantastic job um preparing us for college and. Kind of helping us navigate the program, just because it is a college class, there's a little bit higher of a workload, but she makes it very manageable. And it's also very fun, which usually people think math is not very fun.
I haven't, I haven't personally taken that class, but I've heard a lot of good things about it and about Miss Roberts from my friends that are also seniors that have taken that class through college and the high school.
How about Claire and Charlie?
Yeah, I say that um probably one of my favorite classes I've taken at Seela High School is the um Eastern Public Speaking Class, which um it. Excuse me, it is very small in numbers, there's about um twelve students in the class when I took it, and I think the thing was just. Um when you do sign up for classes, it shows up just as the E W U C M S T two oh one, so students don't really know what that is, but that um. As a person who um wants to um minor in public speaking and um double major in pre law and political science, that was. I learned so much from that class and um I just wish that like more um students like. Kind of knew what they were signing up for when they were going to um look through things, and that was um. That was just a really cool class because it not only like gave you practice, but um it was one of the first classes where. We actually like went through a textbook like you would in a like a a college class.
Um one class I really enjoyed at Seela High School that not many other students did was like History one oh five and one oh six. The workload is like really, the workload is large, but it really pays off once you learn so much about European civilization, and I really learned about. Um just like how Europe started and just like the different civilizations that kind of led to us being here today. And it was really interesting to learn about, and I feel like it kind of can give you a competitive edge when you get to college, and if you want to like. Major in something um history related, or even if you want to go into any major, I feel like that history class would be really good, because then you kind of. Explore all the different parts of past literature, um. Past kind of people who are very significant and like you can look at art in history, and I think it's a really good competitive class.
And who are the instructors for those two classes?
Um the instructor for EW History one oh five and one oh six is Mr. Dibble.
And the Communication Studies Public Speaking is Mrs. Barnett.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, any uh last minute questions? Are there any questions from you through you four?
Um looking at the paper, I see that there's, it's the variety of classes in the different um. I don't know, subjects has definitely grown since I've been in high school, but. I would, I I'm curious to know, is there any opportunity for. The college level classes in the agricultural pathway, because I know like. Um the animal biology and the plant biology is something that I took and I really enjoyed, but there wasn't an opportunity to go further with that as there was for math or English. So I'm just wondering if there was a plan for that.
Yes, there's a plan for that, um so those classes, so Central doesn't offer any of those, so we'd have to go through YVC.
Okay.
Um and WSU, who's the other kind of ag ed. Um institution, they don't offer college in the high school. Um so we would need to go through YVC, um we are currently working on plant science being a YVC five credit class and animal science being a YVC five credit class. The the hitch in those is some of the activities that you have to do to make it. Um for example, you have to sort of, you have to have a animal pen. Um for animal science from YVC, and we don't currently have that, but what I'm working with them on is trying to figure out. Can we use somebody's in town, right, somebody who has the the. I keep saying pen, I don't think that's the right word. Eh eh right, you need to make sure you have all of the things that that class offers, um so our syllabi has to match their syllabi. Um to a T, and and then we have to come to an agreement with. YVC on that, but both of those classes, actually you mentioned, are in the works. Plant science has been in the works for two years now. We do, we would need to change our class slightly um at the high school level, but I I don't think um for Miss Miss Park's perspective, that would be an issue.
Yeah, I know, I was just gonna follow up with, would Miss Park still be able to teach it because she also does a fantastic job?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Thank you so much, Jeff, what a what a fantastic report this morning to hear about all the great things that are happening at the high school and the middle school. Uh and congratulations to you and to the counselors and uh to those teachers that were mentioned and all the other teachers that are working. A little bit extra uh to provide these opportunities for our students. Um to save money and to challenge themselves, really, so fantastic, thank you. All right, well, uh I see that Joe is with us, Joe, I don't know if you want to check in and say you can hear us, but can you hear us? Other Joe, sorry, Joe Catrin. You may be uh in and out uh here, but uh Joe, if there's anything you want to add or. Ask questions, please don't hesitate to jump in, we have a Zoom uh participant from our board member, Joe Catrin. All right, we'll move on to our next report, which is Safety and Transportation. Uh the other Joe, uh the main Joe, the big Joe, uh Joe Cosgarard is here. To um tell the board about what's been happening with safety and transportation. Take it a warning.
Morning, uh Joe Cosgarrett, Central Washington University, class of ninety-one. Hundredth graduating class. Uh anyway, good to be here today to uh present some highlights, uh some bullet items from uh Transportation and Safety. I'll start with uh Safety. Uh the first one is to let you know that in June, uh we held a tabletop exercise. That was four years in the making. Uh it was supposed to happen and then this thing happened in twenty twenty that kind of impacted the whole world and slowed down the process. That was before I came on as the Safety Director, was still the Principal at Seal Academy. Uh but we were able to hold a tabletop exercise um where basically you have groups of people that included our safety leads. We have a safety lead at each school. Um it included our relationship with E S D one oh five and the S SOC, the School Safety Operations Center folks, uh Y S O Yakima Sheriff's Office had a representative there who's also a, a parent in this community, uh Seela Police Department, Seela Fire Department, um Seela Public Works uh were involved. And basically you take a topic um and you go through a scenario around the table. Uh and that's what we did in June and we had a parent representative there as well. Would love to have student voice on that as well. So if uh uh any of our very busy young ladies uh are, are ever interested in, in that, we do have an event coming up in uh February, or if you know of some, uh some friends who are safety minded or just looking for something different to be involved with, um this one will be pretty cool, especially if they're underclassmen because in twenty-five, twenty-six, we're going to um put on a full-scale exercise. Um and, and one of the things I want to make clear, as, as you can see up there, uh first of all, a, a functional exercise that we're doing at the end of February at S I S um is not done during the school day. One of the things that uh would be ideal is to practice something during actual conditions. But we also know that there's a lot of anxiety for folks around school safety. And one of the things we never want to do is to uh use scare tactics and to make people afraid. We do a monthly drill at each school, whether that's evacuation or a lockdown or things of that nature. But um this, this functional exercise is going to be after school. It will involve many of those same entities, if not all of them. And this one will be um what we call an orange vest style. Um I'm sure students are uh familiar with the orange vest drill that we do once per year. Sometimes it's a green or a blue vest or some other color. But uh where a member of the S SOC comes into the school, um clearly marked uh with their ID badge, um usually with a GoPro camera on top of their head, so they look very strange. And that's part of the intent. We want it to be obvious that there's a stranger in our midst and what are we gonna do about it? Um hopefully not clobber them and knock them out, uh but to see something and say something. So this functional exercise will be more of an orange vest drill with no active threat um simulation. But we will utilize I C S, Incident Command Systems, that kind of originated with the military and is used by uh fire departments around uh the country. And those protocols will be in a low-key pursue and evade style event with a post-debrief. So we're in the planning stages for that right now. And then from that, you go from what we did in June, the tabletop, to this event in February that we're going to be doing. Um a functional exercise and then you go full scale. I had the opportunity to participate in a full-scale exercise at our uh local medical college uh last spring. And that's, that's something else. You've got the helicopters there, you've got all kinds of uh emergency personnel there. Um it's, it's a, it's a unique experience and, and we were able to be on the inside of that building and see the actors, um some of whom would not have won a Golden Globe Award and others who did a real nice job. Um but then to see uh the, the first responders come in uh with arms and respond and, and to use fake bullets, if you will, and, and fire and to be in that room and almost fired upon ourselves, uh that was, that was quite the experience for me. And, and uh definitely one of the reasons we won't ever do that during a school day, right? To um heighten the anxiety of, of folks and uh and give you guys all kinds of phone calls. Kevin doesn't need any more of those and neither, neither does the board. So those are things that we are, are working on and uh, and unfortunately, the event for uh getting all the people involved, the date that worked and the time that worked is during a school board meeting uh that you guys have on the twenty-seventh, I believe it is of, of February. But we would, we would love uh to definitely invite you to what'll probably be a Saturday event in twenty-five, twenty-six with the full-scale exercise. So I'll, I'll pause with number one and see if there's any questions or comments about that. And, and I'll highlight there too, um thank you, Kevin, that, that, you know, having that partnership with E S D one oh five and the S SOC is, is vital, especially with the two hats that I wear. Having that partner who, you know, kind of has the checklist and, and all the wax and the R C Ws and, and helps us. And you know, we, we meet monthly. Um Chris Whedon, uh who is our, our contact, our main contact. But uh he also meets week, uh monthly with our safety leads in the building and goes through a checklist uh for each month and to make sure that we are meeting um the requirements and, and going above and, and beyond many of those as well. And then he reports that to me and lets me know who's on track. And I'm, I'm happy to report, all of our buildings are on track in terms of their monthly meetings and, and their requirements by law for, for safety. So part of that, you'll, you'll actually see in another bullet point, one of those requirements. I'll move on to number two. Uh we received our product, uh I V P. Uh and of course, if you've been in education for any amount of time, you know that we love acronyms. So I try to spell those out in places, but if I used any acronyms, we're like, hey, what, what is that? Please let me know. Uh but that's the Infrastructure Visualization Platform. We're working with the Department of Homeland Security's Cyber Security and Infrastructure Team. Uh not only are, are we in safety, but also Greg Sugden in our Technology Department has worked with them this year and, and this past summer as well, uh with some of the cybersecurity issues that districts have been facing. Um and so they came into the high school, the middle school and J C P during last year's spring break. Um they used uh the equipment to give us three hundred and sixty-degree panoramic views of hallways, of classrooms, of closets. And we now have that product in hand. Copies have been shared with each of the building's safety leads. And we're in the process of doing the same with S P D and S F D and hopefully uh Yakima Sheriff's Office soon as well. Our goal is to complete uh onsite visits to both S I S and Lince, which includes this whole footprint, district office, kindergarten, preschool, uh tech, et cetera, maintenance. By the fall of twenty twenty-five, we would like for it to be sooner, but this has become so popular. We were the first school district in Central Washington to get them in, and West Valley came shortly after. But uh these guys are all over the country. In fact, they came to us from Hawaii last spring break. Um so uh they're, they're pretty busy right now. Uh but there is a link there to the information about I V P um with the C I S A group, the Cyber Structure Infrastructure, Infrastructure uh team, that you can learn more. And if you ever want to see the product, I'm happy to, to show that to you. It is one that uh we had to sign off on quite a few things. One of the things was what kind of protections did we want for it? So somebody can't use um uh, you know, ask for, you know, a lot of, a lot of things uh as far as requesting for emails and, and things like that. This is proprietary and is for the eyes only of those that we deem it to be necessary. Or in the event of a crisis. Anyway, that, that product is, is now available to us and we're hoping, like I said, to get the other buildings involved soon. Any questions about that one? I, I was just stoked when I was like, wow, you know, I never envisioned when I took this job, I'd get to work with Homeland Security. And that stokes me and it also leads me back to Dan, your comment when we did that safety forum, how do you sleep at night? I'm like, dang, we're working with Homeland Security. Who would have thunk when, you know, I became a teacher back in ninety-one, ninety-two that we would, we would be at that point, but unfortunately we are. It's the, it's the world we're living in. Uh bullet, bullet point number three, Crisis Response Team, Active Threat Training, um has been happening at uh most of our schools or is in progress as we speak with our S SOC personnel. I got to sit in on one of those with the Lince team where they discussed one of the unfortunate recent events uh at a school back in, in the east and, and the south. And so we, we talk about those real-life event scenarios in, in a tabletop type uh format to discuss and work through. Never in a judgmental way, right? Um because there are, but for the grace of God, go, go we. But um just to say, you know, here's what we know, and it, and, and the one that we went through was so fresh, it's still, we don't know all the answers yet. But we're able to talk through it and say, okay, here are the things they've already identified that, that didn't go well. The communication, um the protocols, the processes. So having that kind of training, an active threat training at each building and having our leads and our crisis team, we have crisis planning teams and crisis response teams. And those folks really buying into that has, has been a, a real plus. Not all districts do that with their crisis response teams. So I've been real proud of our, of our safety leads. We do have a new administrator this year and she completed her I C S, which is the Incident Command System um training that's required through FEMA. Uh she did that online, so all of our administrators are trained and certified. Uh number five, our former S R O as of just a few days ago and, and uh campus security staff. I've done uh school security training, S S S training as per House Bill twelve fourteen, which what is two to three years old now, um completed and, and certified. Um I met with the new S R O, Thomas Radke, this week and um we've had the S SOC in contact with him already as well as opening up access for him to both district and building safety plans uh and all related safety documents. So he's, he's getting a whirlwind tour um with Officer Singletary. They've been making the rounds and, and get, getting him up to speed on things and look forward to building a relationship with him. And just want to publicly say how thankful we've been for Officer Singletary and all the work that he's done uh with us and, and uh his role as an S R O and Seela Police Department. Any questions about any of those? All right, um spring of, of twenty twenty-four, uh myself and um E S D one oh five, uh S SOC Director, Chris Whedon. And then in the summer and fall of twenty twenty-four, did a drive uh and or walkthrough of sites um for what's known as C P T E D, because we needed another acronym, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. You'll actually see that referenced in the safety document that we presented the parents last year, um layered safety that uh, that we produced. Uh but basically, it's, it's taking a look at your outside, your trees and your shrubs and things like that to make sure that you don't have convenient spots for someone who wishes to do harm to hide. And boy, did we have some. Um the middle school, uh our, our trees and shrubs had really grown uh quite a bit and we had a lot of work to do there. And Kevin, you know, had, had met with our director of, of facilities. And so they did a nice job of taking care of that. S I S, a little bit of an older building and just, you know, the way that it was built and the structure, especially in the backside. Um boy, just a lot of places to hide. So um I've done some, some work there as well. So anyway, just know that that's something, we don't just look at the interior, but also the exterior when we, when we do walkthroughs together. Uh number seven, Narcan Training uh uh in each building uh is happening or has happened with building safety leads. And then the added note there is that we have a requirement, I think it, it goes into effect next year, to have at least one person in each building trained in what's known as Stop the Bleed. And that's something that is a conversation that we're, we're having as well. And, and it's offered by E S D one oh five, some, some free training in that regard. And, and so we'll be talking more about that this spring in terms of what our plan is to have at least one person trained in each building. As, as I think is, is wise, having more than just our nurses in the building trained and stop the bleed uh is important. I know Jeff could probably speak to some of the folks that uh are trained through C T E to do that and, and some of the offerings they've uh, they've done in the past with, with high school uh kids. And I'm not sure about middle school if they have or not. But uh anyway, that's a good conversation that Jeff and I can have too. And how can we make sure that, that enough kids have Stop the Bleed training also?
Do people carry that with them or is it located in the, mainly in the office?
Office.
Oh, in the office. Right.
We, we train uh in our health science pathway, we train all students. Um they, they get the Narcan certification and with that, Department of Health gives them Narcan. So um there's been two instances now with um our health science students who've been out in the community and who have saved lives because they've had that training.
So I know we have strict rules around medications backpacks and then are they allowed to carry Narcan in their backpacks?
It's, it's one of those uh that, that if, if you suspect, but they really didn't overdose on something, it, it's not gonna do harm. Uh number eight, um we are planning next steps after an unsuccessful attempt at a federal grant for the high school and middle school for window laminate and weapons detection, hardware and software. Kevin uh sent me a contact for some folks uh that reached out to him uh saying that they now are in Eastern Washington. And I reached out to them uh two days ago and they replied to me. I haven't had a chance to read all of their pricing and specs, but uh we'll start doing so today. And they, they're like, yeah, hey, we'd, we'd love to come to Seela and find a shooting range and demonstrate our product for you. I'm like, another really cool thing I never thought I would do. Let's do that. So um anyway, we're, we're looking at that and also again, just kind of revisiting the plan that we had put in place if we did receive uh the grant to see if maybe we need to go a different direction. There's a lot of companies out there, a lot of them will make promises, and then we hear from school districts that, you know what, this product wasn't, it hasn't panned out. It hasn't been as awesome as they said it was or their brochure, their slick little video. So we want to make sure that before we jump into something and spend a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty or, you know, whatever that is, that we're doing something that will have a good lasting impact safety-wise for years to come and that we can support it. Because any decision we make um regarding things like weapons detection, well, you know, whether it uses an A I component uh a, a little bit or that is uh kind of the main driver behind it, uh you've got to support it year in and year out with the yearly subscriptions and things of that nature.
The whole state?
The whole state.
Yeah.
And our grant writer, you know, said. And our grant writer, you know, said, I don't think we have enough violence in our school. You know, we haven't had enough kids bringing guns. And they were like, oh, okay, well, let's not start promoting that. So, yeah, and I think they asked for half a million like we did and got two hundred thousand. So it was it was pretty competitive. One of the things that those grants and just common sense says is we don't want our students walking into something that feels like a prison, right? We want it to still feel like school, but we also want them to feel safe. So taking a look at some of these products that, you know, you don't feel like you're going into that kind of an institution. All of us have been to concerts where we're walking through or airports where we're walking through those types of systems that are manned. That's part of the issue too, is having something in place that is a product that helps you out without having to have someone man it, you know, for the entire time. And you think about a high school with the constant ingress egress, right, of students? How can we use our existing camera systems that we have? There are products out there that tout using your current cameras and you pay a fee per camera and then a subscription utilizing AI. And some of them will detect, you know, a certain level of weapon or if you raise something, you know, with your hand to a forty-five degree angle. So it's looking at and finding, as Kevin said, something that will work three, four years from now and not just be obsolete. But also trying to balance the idea of, hey, we're not in, we're not in a prison, we're in a school. That's that's the challenge right now, for sure.
Yeah. Ones, one and kids.
And our greatest asset is to continue to make sure that we have a culture of see something, say something, right? To to make sure that in our training to staff in August and beyond with our our safety planning teams and crisis teams and with our students at the start of the year and beyond and the posters that we put up and all of that, that there is that understanding that the people, not the technology, are your best, for lack of a better term, weapon against danger. And we've had so many instances, and I get it almost daily in transportation of see something, say something. You know, of a kid coming home and saying to their parent, this kid said they had a gun. You know, we had a kindergartner a couple of days ago who told a friend on the bus, I've got a gun that I got for Christmas. And their seatmate immediately told the driver. And before they even walked into school two days ago, we were able to check their backpack, have a conversation, talk about why we don't talk about things like that the way that you did in that sort of setting. Did she have a gun on her? No. Did she get a gun for Christmas after we talked to the parent? Yes. It was a toy gun. But anyway, those kinds of things happen almost weekly on our buses. And because of see something, say something and kids letting us know and staff listening, that's always going to be our greatest weapon. It's a matter of that culture. And when, you know, to use a sports example, you talk about the successful National Football League franchises right now that are being juxtaposed with the ones who all just fired coaches. And a lot of the conversation right now is around culture. Who's driving that culture, right? Is it the head coach? Is it the owner? Is it dysfunctional? Is it functional? And that's what I think is is important in safety and why I think it's important that we have a safety lead and a superintendent and leadership team that really puts safety as a major focus is we drive that culture and we make sure that our kids are a part of that and that our staff are a part of that. So that to me is our greatest weapon against, you know, some of the threats that are out there, for sure. Other questions about that part? Number nine, we got some more radios. Thank you to, again, our district leadership so that we had newer radios instead of some of the older models that had become obsolete as well as a transmitter. And are we fully up with the new transmitter? We're still working on that, right? Yeah, so repeaters that allow us to bounce more signals. For instance, I can clearly hear the middle school conversations on the radio from anywhere, right? And transportation from from anywhere, except in my office, I get terrible reception, which is a weird thing. But, you know, I can't hear SIS unless I'm going up the hill and almost within sight of it and also true of this building. So that will build our capacity to be able to respond as a district in times of crisis. So we're moving in a real positive direction. I will be attending tomorrow, if all goes well, back at Transportation of the Northwest Chapter of the Association of Threat Assessment Professionals. As a member, one of the requirements is that you attend in person at least one meeting per year at the national level or at your your local chapter. I'll be traveling to the Microsoft Redmond Campus tomorrow to hear a presentation by Bruno Diaz and Raymond Fleck. First one being Behind the Threat: Unraveling Violence Theories, Legal Chef's Defensible Tactics and Real World Lessons. Sounds pretty exciting. They always give detailed case studies, which I find fascinating at a corporate level, a school level, you know, whatever's appropriate. The second presentation, Standard Care and Threat Assessment. How do we identify, assess and manage persons who pose a threat of targeted violence? And certainly that, you know, you think, oh, do we have to deal with that in education? Yeah, we do. Whether it's an employee, whether it's a student, whether it's a parent or, you know, somebody from the outside, those are things that we do deal with. And so I'm looking forward to building my knowledge base to help us out as a district. Any questions about that? All right, I think we move on now real quickly to the, and how much time do I have left? Couple minutes? All right, I'll I'll try to go a little more more quickly. Transportation highlights are, first of all, brand new jacket, first time I've worn it is for you guys. All of us in transportation got one and, you know, talk about building a culture that, just little things like that and that's in their contract to have every few years. So thank you, that is huge. Our facility is the envy of all the vendors who come by. They just marvel at it, especially the shop portion of it, but we are so grateful for the entire facility. Just fantastic. And, you know, yeah, there's occasional little things that go wrong with any building on a new build, but compared to what we had before, wow, so thank you. It's talk about a culture, a positive culture builder, been fantastic. Letting you know that we're utilizing our newest buses in our fleet. These are like two thirds of a size of a regular bus. You see a lot of them in Yakima. They're inclusive in that they have the wheelchair lift and all of the seats can come out. Whereas most buses, they're pretty secure in there. So you've got adjustable tracks. So we could we could put all wheelchairs in that bus. We could put one wheelchair or three and and students in regular seating. So today was the first day that nine becomes a part of our special ed fleet because Bus thirty-five is out for a month with some head gasket issues. And we had to do some rearranging of things, but pretty excited for that. And Bus two has been used all this week for our Route ten kindergarten run. So we're getting those out on the road a little more than we did in the fall with the SIS Fall Academy. We're expecting another full-size one to show up at the end of January. We got the invoice yesterday. Chris got the title last week, I believe. And then another small sped bus, which is badly needed at the springtime or start of summer. We continue to communicate and network well with Rocky at SEALA Public Works. We both graduated from South Kitsap High School in Port Orchard, so we have that connection. The traffic signal that they did the work on in the fall and you've seen the cones down there at the lower parking lot of the high school, the actual traffic was slated for February installation.
Can I ask you a quick question about that? What's the advantage of that traffic signal? What do we what do we expect to see?
One of the things that we were hoping to do and we look at it as a joint city and school benefit is to be able to get traffic in and out sooner and to not have some of the conflict there at the crosswalks and that intersection. And we've already seen greatly improved traffic movement just by having two lanes coming out of that parking lot instead of one. So you've got the dedicated lane for turning right and going straight and one for turning left.
And are there sensors in our parking lot that'll trigger that light as people?
Yeah, we'll have the radar sensors once.
Radar sensors, okay.
Yep. Now, will there be some unintended consequences? Sure, you know, and you think about that road icing up in the winter and people coming down the hill. We're going to have to educate folks to think a little differently and not tearing out of the the high school parking lot at fifty miles an hour. So there's definitely going to be some things that that we'll have to do some education and making sure. And the timing, that's one of the things we've talked about when we first started this conversation is, you know, you see the timing sometimes at the light at JCP, you can sit there forever. What can we do to tweak it as we see what the traffic flow looks like so that we don't have people sitting on the hill all the way back to First Street? That may happen from time to time. The other part was a, you know, when you got the big softball tournaments, you know, the state tournament, summer tournaments that have nothing to do with us, football games. Let's see a little bit of traffic flow for people trying to get out and get in. That's what we're hoping for. Next bullet point, the addition of two PM aids to supplement the one we had has been a huge welcome. We've seen decreased behavioral issues, happier drivers by far. We've only been doing that for a month or so and we've got a couple wonderful people and a couple of wonderful subs who are coming on board and just working with our kids. And having folks that are already in the school and know the kids makes a big difference too. So we have been doing that and really thrilled at the results that we've seen. I had one driver I thought might leave us and I asked him yesterday how things going? He's like, night and day, night and day, I can concentrate on the road and I'm happy. Good, good to hear. Our driver staffing has been pretty good. You've probably heard about districts that have struggled and that sort of thing. I've been driving a lot with McKinney Vento. You'll see those numbers here in a moment for our homeless population or students experiencing home insecurity. But, you know, we got a lot of things coming up. Our lead mechanic is going to be on medical leave. We've got a regular driver who does a lot of our field trips. That's going to be on medical leave for at least five weeks. We have a driver who resigned just this week for personal reasons. We've got another one who's moving to the East Coast. So we have some challenges, but a good conversation yesterday with Chris and Kevin. And we're going to bring onboard a floating sub so that someone who comes in every day, because every day we have a McKinney Vento run, two of them actually. And every day we have somebody out for a trip or, you know, if not two or three people. So and I'll give you just a quick, for instance, I got an email yesterday from the middle school. Hey, there's a big wrestling match at the high school, they're using all of our mats on Monday. I know this is last minute. And you take ninety kids at two thirty PM on Monday to LYNs. And I look and I go, okay, my resigned driver got to fill it. Two McKinney Vento runs got to fill it. Medical absence got to fill it. Don't know if I can, right? But with a floating sub, we got a better chance of taking care of some of those types of things. And that's a daily puzzle to take care of. And as I told Kevin, I can be here this morning because I sent both of my mechanics out driving today.
This is an odd question, but Jeff, is there any plan? And I don't want eighteen-year-olds driving buses, but I know Othello School District has a CDL, CTE, boy, there's some letters for you, program. Is SEALA thinking at all about commercial driver's license as a program?
Yes, Joe and I briefly talked about it. Othello was donated a truck.
Oh, wow, okay.
For that training. And so through Scott Rurk, he's been sort of, he's our business internship coordinator. So he's the one who helps forge some partnerships and works a lot with our community partners, community businesses. He's kind of put some feelers out. Are there any trucks out there, you know, from some of our, so our partners, Treetop, Zerkel, Munson, some of these who could potentially have them? We want to.
Yeah, okay, great.
We've looked at it, it's something that is a high need. And as you know, CTE programs, you can't you can't implement them unless it's a high demand skill and industry need. So it certainly is, we've talked about it, high levels of interest. And we have the people who could potentially, especially with having like floating subs and things like that, we have some potential trainers.
Right, 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 okay, thank you. And we do require twenty-one years of age in.
Oh, thank God, so, okay.
Well, I know for CDLs, it's now, it's neither nationally or some states at eighteen, which I don't, you know.
No, that is a conversation we'll continue to have because there's a great potential there.
Yeah, great.
So finally, I just threw some three-year numbers at you. Every fall, winter and spring, we are required in what's called the Stars Report to provide a count for OSPI. Our funding comes from the upcoming February first count, so that's going to be a vital one. But you can see our last three years of fall counts. All riders includes all riders except for those within the walk zone. So you can add another hundred twenty-five to a hundred and fifty to those numbers. You've got the high and the low during those three days. And then you've got the sped, early ed, which is only the PK kids on little buses. So if they're riding on a big bus, which some do, those are considered regular riders. And same with our homeless population, only if we're picking them up separately. We do have some that are considered McKinney Vento that are riding on regular routes. You can see that we have grown quite a bit in McKinney Vento. Eleven, eight on that particular day was was not a clear indicator of last year. We had over twenty, but that particular day we had eight. And then if you look at this year's number seventeen, the actual number when I wrote this yesterday was twenty-one and as of this morning, it's now twenty-three. So I have to plan for two more, starting on Monday. We go to Union Gap twice each morning and then afternoon. We go to Terrace Heights, we go to West Valley and all over Yakima with the kids that attend SEALA but are living elsewhere. Questions about any of those? Give you an example, a student that we have been driving now for three days as of tomorrow has a new location. And so it's that kind of challenge. And then the two from Monday are a new location for us. So it's trying to integrate them into our current routes if possible.
All right, thank you very much, Joe. Fantastic report. And I know that our student board reps were asked some questions about safety. We'd like to hear your input on that, but maybe we'll save that for the next time that we're able to have that conversation. Absolutely, yeah. And thank you for your input on the college and the high school. Thank you especially to the two gentlemen that were here reporting for us this morning. Are there any other questions we don't have a need, I don't think, for an executive session? Are there any board communications at this point? We good? We don't have any snow days yet, right? We're hanging up. What did I just do? Oh, no. Like five, five people all went like that. All right, again, thank you for being here this morning and I'll move that we adjourn the meeting. Do I need to do that? I can't remember if I do that. We're adjourning the meeting, thank you.